I call to order the February 12th, 2018 meeting of the Board of Selectmen. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of minutes, January 22nd, 2018, regular meeting.
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the minutes of the January 22nd, 2018 regular meeting estimate.
Second.
Second.
Moved in second and any discussion? Hearing done, all in favor? Great, thank you. It's now past the hour of seven o'clock. We have a hearing to consider requests from Anthony's Coal Fired Pizza of Northborough LLC to change the manager of record for their all-alcoholic beverages restaurant license for premises located at 10002B Shops Way. Sandra Binats?
Yeah, Binats, yeah, sure.
Welcome.
Thank you, appreciate it.
We have your application before us. Could you just explain the circumstances of the transfer?
Sure. I just finished up my training program in the Newton area and also the Littleton area, and I was taking the Northborough Anthony's Coal Fired Pizza over. Jay was only there for a certain amount of time until I finished all my training and so forth, but now that I'm done with everything, I'm there for good.
Okay, excellent, great. Chief Libber, we have also a report from Detective Sergeant Brian Griffin that all the background checkers has been completed, no issues.
We can drop that this morning.
Yep, very, very good, thank you. Questions by the board, Leslie?
Thank you for being here.
Sure, thank you.
I just wanted to make note of the fact that you have some nice experience.
Yes, I do.
That for, looks like almost four years, you were with Blue Coyote Grill.
I have.
So almost seven years with Olive Garden?
With Olive Garden, yeah, general manager, yeah.
And then Bertucci's.
Correct.
So you really have some wonderful experiences.
I do, thank you.
That's great, we appreciate that, it's a great restaurant and good luck with everything.
Yeah, thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Any other questions? Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move the board vote to approve the application submitted by Anthony's Coal Fired Pizza of Northborough LLC to change the manager of their all-alcoholic beverages restaurant license at 10002B Shops Way to Sandra Binats.
Binats, yeah.
Suck it. Moved in second, all in favor?
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Already, we are on to reports.
Wow, moving right along. Does that mean me or?
That would be you, Bill.
All right, Bill.
You don't have this down yet?
Yes.
We can go out of order if you have to.
You know, it's tough being down on the end down here, it's kind of like you're separated from everybody. So anyways, thank you. On Tuesday, the 30th, I was, had the opportunity to bring a little group of Weebalows who were crossing over to become Boy Scouts and part of their, the last initiative, I guess, is doing something with some municipal government building. So we, I brought them into the town hall, brought them to engineering, brought them to up here, and John, John spoke to them for a while, let them sit in the seats of selectmen and had a great time. It was, it was a good experience and for the kids and for me too, so. Brought them across to see Andy Dowd, and Andy explained a lot of things, and had some interesting questions they asked, and I appreciated everybody giving the time, you know, to talk to the, to the kids. We were here for about an hour, hour and a half, it was great, it was a good time, so. And last Wednesday, I had the opportunity to speak in front of the dull man's group at the senior center, and I know both chiefs are there, John also spoke to them. It was, it was a nice, nice venue, it was the first time I actually spoke somewhere where you didn't have to stand up or stand in front of a podium, kind of, we sat in a group around, like a big, around the table, and we talked, and they asked questions about things going on in the town, and it was, it was great, it was great to see him and talk with him, so. That ends my report.
Thank you, Bill, Don.
Well, feasibility study for the fire station has, well, has selected an architect, Johnson Roberts, and they will continue to meet next Friday, the 23rd, and so it's moving forward. We are all very excited and ready to work with the architect, so that concludes my report.
Thank you, Leslie?
Okay, want to thank Police Chief and Fire Chief for our monthly reports, and I wanted just to mention a couple of things in Chief Parenti's fire report of interest, and I think this is great, we're continuing our restriping project, and I assume what you mean by that is that it's red striping is going on.
Red, black and gold, yeah, we just did our squad, so we'll do a bit of time when we have the money.
That's great, you're happy with the way it looks?
Yeah.
It's a nice change, go back to the red?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's not all red, but we're getting it.
Some red in there, yeah, I think that's great. In addition to the restriping, we have redesigned our patch and have begun the process of replacing our old patches, and that's, that's great too. And I just wanted to make mention the fact as well that we started, you say that we started 2018 the same way we finished 2017 by setting a new record with 210 responses for the month, so.
Busy, busy, busy.
Busy, busy, so, congratulations and thank you very much, your department. That's the patch? That's great, thank you very much. I just wanted to wish everyone who has a child in the system, school system, to have a safe school break, that's coming up, I think, next week.
It is.
Right?
Is it?
Already.
Wow.
I'm flying, I have a very vacation.
Yeah, comes up really fast. And one final thing I wanted to, to mention is that I was contacted by a teacher at the high school, actually it's a teacher that my kids had, who is pursuing a master's in leadership and administration, and part of his project was to interview a local official, so he asked if I could come in, and he said the topic of what he needed to cover was the dynamics between the town and the schools, and it was really, really fun to sit down and talk with him about this, and having had some history with the school committee from 2000 to 2004, when it was Superintendent Melikan, and Barry was here at that time, and just to see the progress that we've made since then, I think everybody's aware that that things have improved so much, and with, with John here and Christine Johnson Superintendent, Charles before her, that it's just really amazing how well the town and the schools work together, and with both sides, if necessary, making concessions, so that we can have the budget that we need for town meeting every year. So that was a fun, fun thing to sit down and talk about with, with him, so I just wanted to mention that, and that ends my report.
Thank you, Leslie, Jeff?
Quick one, remind folks that town meeting is coming up, and it's Monday, the, John, help me with the date.
23rd.
The 23rd?
April 23rd.
Of April. As I say every year, this is your chance to be heard, and as I also say every year, never fails the week after town meeting, somebody somewhere comes up and says, "I can't believe town, town meeting voted to do X," and my first question is, "So how did you vote?" And invariably, the answer is, "I didn't go." So it's your chance to be heard, it's your town, this is our chosen form of government, so, you know, take the time to be there. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Jeff.
Just a very brief follow-up on recreational marijuana, the Cannabis Control Commission has been conducting some public hearings at various locations around the state in order to get feedback on their draft regulations that they published late in December. With that feedback, they'll presumably make whatever revisions they're going to make, we don't anticipate there's going to be anything all that significant with respect to our initiative to proceed with general and zoning bylaws to prohibit. Planning Board has also been working on a contingency bylaw to regulate the use if, for some reason, somehow, some way, we don't manage to pass the prohibition bylaws at town meeting. And following up on what Jeff is saying, this certainly has been an issue that caught a lot of interest around the town, and as I mentioned back at one of our meetings in January, April 23rd is the date, that's the Monday following the week of April's school vacation.
Correct.
Which has a tendency to make people forget that town meeting is coming up, so be aware that that's the date, if you have to make arrangements for babysitting, if you have to make arrangements with your work travel schedule, if you have discretion to avoid traveling on that date so that you can be at town meeting, be in the audience, and be able to vote when these topics come up, these warrant articles come up, please just be aware, you've got plenty of time to make the planning ahead of time, so do what you can to be there that night. That concludes my report, John?
Nothing this evening?
Very good, thank you. This public comment section of our meeting, inquire whether any members of the public in attendance would care to comment? Thank you then, we'll proceed with new business, discussion of draft 2019 legislative priorities, John?
In your packet this evening is our annual legislative priorities letter. As you know, each year, we do sort of a ground, a grassroots approach to this letter, we ask all departments and all boards and committees that may have any legislative priorities or initiatives that they'd like us to bring forward to our legislative delegation, to submit them to my office, we sort of synthesize these things and, and pull them together into a draft. We typically look at anything from changes to rules and regulations that might enhance or improve the efficiency or the effectiveness of local government, so they don't necessarily mean requesting funds from the state. Sometimes it's just asking them to relieve us of some of the mandates and requirements that aren't value-added. Then, of course, there are always a couple of things that we're looking for in terms of funding of critical things, like roadway money or circuit breaker funds, things of those, of that nature. And so what we try to do is, we don't go with the à la carte approach, we bring all these requests together, and we try to develop our top three requests that we'd like them to focus on, and then there's a few secondary items as well. This year, what we have is very similar to, to last year, our top three priorities have not changed, they continue to be items that are extremely important to us in terms of our financial management of the town. And I was just going to go through the, the top three very briefly, the first is an increase to our Chapter 90 allocation. Chapter 90 is the primary mechanism by which infrastructure gets improved across the state. The state issues a transportation bond, and then that money is divided up amongst all the communities. In many communities, that's the only source of, of funding for local roadway and infrastructure improvements. In Northborough, we have, as you well are aware, we have a comprehensive pavement management plan whereby we know exactly how much we need to spend each year to maintain our roads or improve them. Several years ago, the state released $300 million statewide, typically and historically, they released 200 million. $200 million for Northborough is about, we get about $500,000 out of that statewide release. When they move to 300 million, we see closer to $750,000, and it just so happens we built our pavement management plan around that increased $300,000 appropriation. So we have $500,000 roughly in Chapter 90 funds, we have $300,000 in the operating budget, and we have $300,000 in the capital budget. Combined, we're spending about, we know we need to spend 1.1 million dollars minimally to maintain the current condition of our roads. So when the state increased it to 300 million, we were at our goal, which was terrific. However, they did that for one year, and then they reduced it back to 200 million. So the Mass Municipal Association has this as a top priority as well, infrastructure maintenance and management is a huge issue for us across the state, as it is actually nationwide, so that is, that is one of our, our top three priorities, to get that funding back up to where it needs to be. By the way, I should just mention, in the interim, this town has been using available funds to backfill that, to make sure for the last several years that we are spending at least 1.1 million dollars, so our roads are being maintained and improving ever so slightly, but if the state would increase that funding as requested by the Mass Municipal Association, we'd be on, we'd be on an upward trending graph in terms of the overall improvement of our road, whereas right now, we are on a maintenance, almost a flat, a flat trajectory.
At this point, the governor's budget is proposing just 200 million, right?
That's correct. Disappointingly enough, the governor is proposing just 200 million this year. The odd thing was, when Governor Baker first took office, he was the one to release the 300 million, so the Mass Municipal Association and all the cities and towns thought, "This is great, we finally, after years and years of lobbying, we've gone over the, all over the hump here, and we're going to maintain 300 million immediately the next year," and they cut it back to, to 200, so, which was disappointing. But we just constantly feel like we're on the cusp of, of making the argument for why this really needs to happen. In Northborough, as it is in many facets of, of our management, we're in better shape than most, but it would certainly go a long way to easing things, or put us on a much more improved, a higher trajectory of improvement to get that extra, you know, 250,000, 300,000. The second top priority, which we are still actually in the process of updating, we need to get current numbers from the superintendent, and we weren't able to get the numbers in here, but the second top priority is increase of the circuit breaker, the special education circuit breaker funding. This is absolutely critical to the operation of the school department, and it's one of those items that isn't appropriated at town meeting, so people don't see it and they aren't aware of it, but it's an outside funding source that allows the school department to provide the appropriate level of services, special education services. And the state has a circuit breaker funding source that's supposed to help us out when we have a child move into our district and we haven't had a chance to budget. Some of these out of placement, out of, out of district placements for special education could be, you know, two, three, $400,000, so it's significant, very heavily medical-related. But without this circuit breaker being appropriated at a sufficient level, it basically creates a, an unfunded mandate for us. And so, you know, last year, we spent a lot of time talking about the, the details of the numbers, but it, it, it's millions of dollars that we're, we're talking about here that, that has a huge impact on our regular education. If the state doesn't step up and do their fair share for special education, then those funds, oftentimes, it's a zero-sum game, they come out of the regular education because we're mandated to provide these services. And I don't think anybody says we shouldn't be doing it, but when it comes to special education, where some of these expenses can be so high for a district and come unexpectedly, we've argued consistently that that's the type of thing that needs to be funded on a much broader tax base, like at the state level, and not at the local level, because oftentimes, it has the appearance that you're pitting districts against each other, and really, we want to do what's right by the children, but the funding source needs to come from the state. So again, this is a huge issue statewide, not just for Northborough, but it's a top priority for, I think, all communities. And again, we'll, we'll add the updated actual figures in as soon as we get those from the superintendent's office. The third top priority is one that you're familiar with, this is other post-employment benefit reform. As I said at the start of this, not everything that we're asking for is for more funding, sometimes we're asking for reform of current regulations or legislation that would help out the town. In this case, we're looking for OPEB, other post-employment benefit reform at the state level. You're all well aware that our OPEB liability in this town, our unfunded liability is about 3.9 million dollars at this point. We have done a very good job of planning and, and setting aside money, we put aside a half a million dollars a year towards our OPEB trust fund, which is great, we have over $2 million in that fund right now, but against such a large, growing liability, it's difficult. The issue that we're asking the state to help us out on is how people accrue those benefits, because they're, they're benefits that are dictated by state statute. And effectively, any employee who is 55 years or older and has worked for 20 hours per week for at least 10 years qualifies to receive health insurance benefits for the rest of their life. They pay a portion of it, and the town pays a portion, just as if they were active employees. So it's a tremendous benefit, but the issue that we draw their attention to is, unlike pension, and we did pension reform several years back, if you recall, we're asking that these be adjusted to account for part-time work, full-time years of service. In other words, a graduated benefit is earned based on the number of years and the number of hours that you work, just like it does for your pension. It's not an all or nothing, 55 and you work 20 hours or more and you get the whole benefit. That would help us out, as we say to our legislators, "We can't fund our way out of this," any more than we could fund our way out of pension liability, there needs to be a little bit of reform, that's one of the aspects that we're asking for, and outside of maybe some political pain and suffering on their part, this doesn't cost the state something to do, this isn't a funding issue for them, it's a regulatory adjustment that would help us out. So those are our top three legislative priorities, you've seen these before and you know we've discussed them at great length. In addition to the top three, we have a couple other ones that we've added in here. One is to delegate stormwater permitting and management, this came from our DPW director, from the United States Environmental Protection Agency, so from the EPA, the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection. Basically, we are one of, I believe, three states that hasn't delegated this to our, our state DEP. And it just has many benefits of, of us being able to communicate more easily, manage more easily, we have a relationship with the Mass DEP. Trying to do, to do this through a federal agency, there's just a big disconnect jumping from local government to a federal agency, and so we'd like to see this delegated. This is, there's a large group and a, that's actively pursuing this, and the MMA has also endorsed this delegation as well, so that's something that, we just want them to be aware, if it comes up, that we would like them to vote in favor of this, that we think it's a good idea. And again, the beauty of this is, there's no additional cost associated with it, it's just a, a regulatory change that would allow us to more efficiently and effectively manage what we need to do. There's a couple here that you've seen before, we have a blanket statement asking them to please oppose unfunded mandates in general. Every year, they seem to pass unfunded mandates, and sometimes we get funded for them, as we're, we're supposed to, other times, they decide that they classify them not as being unfunded mandates, even though they cost us money. But that's something that we just want to draw their attention to. And by the way, when there's any legislation that comes up that is an unfunded mandate, we make sure that we make them aware of that. A, if we oppose it, or in some cases, if it is a good idea, we say, "That's a good idea," and we, we like it, however, it's an unfunded mandate and you need to make sure that we, we get the funding so that we can implement that. And you see this with like, early, early voter registration is a good example of that. I think most people feel that's a, a good idea, but it's being mandated, and therefore we need to be, by law, compensated for that. And we did, in fact, just get a check for the unfunded mandate of early voter registration. Sometimes it's tough, because sometimes we get funded and reimbursed, like outside of the fiscal year where we incurred the cost, so it's not really helpful, you know, because it's not in real time.
You can have those funds to balance here.
But the good news is, when you win that battle, and it get, it is determined to be an unfunded mandate that has to be provided for, if it happens in subsequent years, if they want to keep doing that, then they know they need to build that into their operating budget, so there is benefit to it. We have a standing request for them to oppose any legislation pertaining to ambulance fees that would pay patients directly. Those revenues need to come back to the service provider, in this case, Northborough Fire Department, so we want to make sure that, that we don't divert the revenues that we operate our ambulance service from, away from the fire department and to the patients, because once they receive the, the money, it's very difficult for us to chase them and get it back. And then last but not least, it's still, it's still on here, we are requesting their support of Senate Bill 407, which is our agricultural composting initiative that Senator Chandler's office filed on behalf of the town of Northborough, and this basically shifts oversight from the Department of Agricultural Resources to DEP, oversight of all composting operations. And you know the board has on record, provided testimony, asked for this legislation. I can tell you, it's disappointing, because it went to the committee on energy and environment and never got reported out, and we've never really seen any traction. So I've made repeated requests for updates, but there hasn't been anything to report back, because it just hasn't moved out of the committee. Oftentimes, bills die in committee, unless they report them out favorably, they'll never see the light of day to be taken up by, taken up by the full legislature. If you remember, several years back, Representative Greg Warr sponsored a home rule petition for us to change the threshold for prevailing wages for projects, that went to the Rules Committee. The Rules Committee's sole job is to decide what committee to send it to to study it. Okay, so it's like, it's, it's like two steps removed from ever seeing the light of day, and that never made it out of the Rules Committee, never even went to the committee to, to study it, to make, give an opinion. So at least we are in the committee with this one, but I think they're finding it, I think they're finding it difficult and, and haven't made any progress. But again, we, we continue to make requests for updates, and as soon as we hear information on that, we'll, we'll bring it back to you, but we want to make sure that they're aware that that's still out there. So this is our, our draft legislative priorities letter, certainly open to any comments or suggestions. I guess after that, what I would request from the board is that you allow and authorize the chairman of the board and myself to make any final adjustments to the numbers, particularly with regard to the sped circuit breaker, because we're waiting on those figures, but in terms of the thrust of the, of the priorities, certainly open to any comments or suggestions the board may have.
Jeff?
I know she touched on it, but kind of skipped over it here on the procurement and public law, public construction laws.
Yes.
At the risk of, we're probably just killing extra trees by putting this on here, but it's a...
Well, you know, we really made a full court press on this, as I said several years back, with a home rule petition, and it never made it out of the, out of the Rules Committee, but it's still important for us, and basically, what we have consistently asked for is to exempt projects $100,000 or less from the prevailing wage law. The prevailing wage law dictates how much we have to pay folks, and I know it's supposed to be based on, on market rates, but what we find, we find two issues with this. One is that our local contractors, our local firms won't bid on our projects because you have to pay prevailing wages, and there's a lot of paperwork and compliance that's associated with that. And number two, they find that, that those prevailing wages are higher than they typically pay their employees, and so it causes issues for them. You know, you may, we find from, painters are a good example, we find that the prevailing wage rate that the state says we have to pay for a public project is oftentimes twice what a local painting company is paying their, their folks. So, you know, why do you make double the pay on one job and then you're going back? So they don't like to do that with their employees. So what you wind up doing is, you wind up getting large firms, oftentimes not local, many times, they're coming from Connecticut or Rhode Island, because it's worth it for them to, to bid on these projects, and they have people in these bigger firms, their sole job is to comply with the state procurement laws and the prevailing wage laws and stuff like that. So they actually have somebody built in, a compliance officer built in, so it adds administrative costs, and the smaller firms, they just, they just don't want to be burdened by that, so they pass. And, and so we find that we have local firms that you or I would use to paint a room, you know, in your house, and get a very reasonable rate, but when we put it out, those same firms, they don't want to do it here, because it's just way too much extra paperwork to come and paint a room, and, you know. So yeah, so Jeff got me going, even though I, I try not to, this is one of these, I mean, I've been, I've been...
I couldn't leave it hanging.
I know, I've been dealing with this for 20 years, and it's sort of a pet peeve of mine, because all around, I think it costs the taxpayers more money, and ironically, what it was designed to do, which is, which is take care of the, the small businesses, it's, in my opinion, it excludes them.
I think the, the telling story for me was when one of our senators, not Harriet Chandler, said that this was a safety issue, and I asked him if he paid prevailing wage laws last time he had his house painted, and he said, "Well, no." So I guess the public safety means more than his family's safety, so I'll leave it at that.
You've got to narrow that down, Jeff, when you said that, who said that? Not Harriet Chandler.
Bill?
John, when, when the MMA backs some of these, the same issues that we have, doesn't that have more traction when they do that?
It does, and what we try to do is, we try to support each other, so... It does, and what we try to do is, we try to support each other, so, at the end of January, the MMA, Mass Municipal Association, this is the association of all the citizen towns in the state, they have their annual conference, and that annual conference is a, their annual meeting, and part of that meeting is to decide and vote on their key priorities and what they're lobbying the legislature for, and so what we try to do is, we have some issues that are local issues, like our composting issue, but then there are others like Chapter 90 and OPEB reform and circuit breaker, that we share with most of other communities in the Commonwealth. In an ideal world, the MMA has their clout, and then we back it up by actually pressing our specific local legislators and getting them to commit to us that they're going to support these initiatives, so there's a blanket legislative agenda by the Mass Municipal Association, and then it's backed up by us in a personal way, meeting with our specific legislative delegation, it takes both to make things happen, because the MMA to them, to our legislators, is sort of, it's a, it's a big lobby, but it's also a faceless lobby, but when they come here, and the MMA's on record, and we're backing that up, and we're giving them in writing specifically what our priorities are, and we're telling them in real terms, in real dollars, in effectiveness and efficiencies, what it means to us, I think it has an impact. We've gotten far more traction from our legislative delegation since we started doing this than when they used to come in and speak in general terms, because sometimes, they'd be speaking in general terms about things that they're passionate about, like beaver trapping, okay, that's great, but I don't want to talk about beaver trapping if we're not talking about our top three priorities first, you know, so, so it's a combination that really gives you the effectiveness.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Okay, so just by agreement, then?
Yes. Actually, you would take a form of vote, so that you have the authority to sign the letter with your blessing.
Motion, Bill.
Yes. Mr. Chair, I move the board vote to authorize the chair and the town administrator to finalize and sign the legislative priorities letter for discussion with our state legislative delegation at the March 12th board meeting.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor? Great, thank you.
So if I may just comment, so in the motion, it's clear, we will send the letter out to them, and our legislative delegation will be in at your March 12th meeting to hear our needs and have a little bit of back and forth with them.
Any other business to come before the board?
We just have the need for a brief executive session.
Okay, the executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21, Subsection 3, collective bargaining due to the chair's determination that a discussion regarding this matter in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the position of the board.
Chair.
Oh, never mind, sorry.
I didn't do it.
Yes, fine.
You're wearing off on me, it's always the new guy.
It's always the new guy.
I move the board vote to enter into executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21, Subsection 3, collective bargaining, due to the chair's determination that a discussion regarding this matter in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the position of the board.
Second. Aye.
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 Aye. The board will return from executive session only to adjourn open meeting.
Thank you.